Okay. It's six P M. And I call the city council, so we're set then. Of October to order. Roll call, please.
Council member.
Here.
Council member.
Here.
Council member.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Council member. Thomas.
Here.
Council member.
Will not be here this evening.
Council member. Edwards.
Soaking up the Grecian sun.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's move on to our agenda is is brief. Uh, but I would entertain with some lunch to approve the agenda.
There it moves to approve the agenda.
Give me a little seconds.
All in favor?
Uh.
I. Okay. Okay, so I wanted to start this evening. This is sort of our first shot across the bow for budget session. And so it is meant to be sort of light and sort of introductory. Um, this is the first year that that Crystal has been involved in budget. And so we're really taking an approach of let's do what works for us. I know if some of you have been here before, you're familiar with these old budget sheets with the brilliant yellow columns. Um, and so we're trying something just a little bit different and a little different approach. But one of the things I wanted to start with was a discussion of our operating contingency. So this is a line item in our budget that is usually and will be probably the last thing that we talk about. This is sort of a clearinghouse of previously has been sort of a clearinghouse of funds that much of which is used as you might expect for the word operating and contingency of these unexpected things that we just need to 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 do in the day to day operation or spend in the day to day operation of the city. But they don't really fit under any other obvious place. So, for example, sometimes I will sit down with a department and and, you know, bring lunch for everybody. And then we will touch bases and see how things are going and blah, blah, blah. I often will put that lunch bell under operating contingency. But in the past, operating contingency has also included funds that are earmarked. Sometimes they have been earmarked for the Lake County Community Fund. Um, sometimes they have been earmarked for, I'm just looking back here. Uh. Let me find it. Line item for operating contingency. That's near the bottom of this page. Oh, here we go. One. So like, so this is in twenty twenty-three. We had twelve thousand dollars that were earmarked for the Lake County Community Fund. Um, forty-five thousand for economic development. That was just sort of this, we don't have a line item for that. It was just sort of like, let's set this money aside. And then and it quote additional thirty thousand, which was just operating contingency. This last year, we had a couple similar earmarks, but then we also had a certain amount set aside for community contributions. That was about twenty grand and then the rest was general fund, which was actual operating contingency. So what I would like to do is kind of get away from all these various and sundry earmarks and actually make operating contingency just what it is, which is unexpected. Um, necessary expenditures in the day to day operation of the city. However, that puts us in a position of what do you guys want to do in terms of community contributions? Like, I think Crystal had recommended making that its own line item.
Yeah. I think there might be an old account that was out there for economic development. Mm hmm. But I think we can repurpose either line item or create a new item, line item for those contributions to nonprofits.
Yeah. And I would still like to maintain if there is a line item for economic development so that we can, in a way, like, have somebody there, like, do we want to make a contribution to the chamber? We've done that in the past for many years in a row. Do we want to make a contribution to the E D C? Should they ever kind of get their their running shoes on again? Do we want to use it for perhaps a specific economic development project that the city is trying to promote? You know, like.
Is it cumbersome to make a new line item or is it?
No, not really.
I do feel like E D's economic development and the community giving should be separate line items.
Because I don't think we will have in terms of the community giving. You know, those would be the not how I imagine it. Groups and, you know, community groups and nonprofits who are seeking something specifically for whatever their project. It wouldn't be.
Yeah.
You know, like. And we do have, I would guess I would point out, we do have one of our strategic priorities is is business support, economic development, like that whole kind of cash basin. And so it might make sense to have an economic development line item so we can look at what we can do perhaps under that particular strategic priority and have some money directed towards whatever those those ideas are.
Yeah.
Um, but anyway. That's kind of, I just kind of wanted to hear, and especially for you, Christians, I think right now you're the only one who's been through a budget session before. Um. And I'm really embracing this, like, you know, like, me and Sarah, we're just kind of like, and Crystal, like today, we were like, we're all kind of new, like, we're just going to run this like we want to run it, you know, like, we don't have to do things the way that we used to do things. Want to do them in a way that makes sense to us.
Yeah.
And to it's all of us.
I mean, by all means, makes sense. I don't see why it wouldn't make sense. And, um, to me, we're at least in this era of the city are relatively new. And there's no shame in attempting different styles and different things and seeing what sticks.
Well, and we did contract with, um, third guy. So I'll be using their platform for the budget book. So things are just going to look different in general, but the reporting is like, it's much better.
Good.
That's what we want. Yeah, that yellow and blue hurts my eyes.
Yeah.
So we can even, I'll just use that.
We we can all, I have a whole bunch of Sharpies in my office if anybody wants to highlight things.
Or if you have a ruler.
Right?
And use all their paper to like, make sure it's good.
Yeah, okay, cool. Well, thank you. And so I think as moving forward, if we run into these little things that previously have just sort of floated around under operating contingency, I'm going to encourage us to consider pulling them out as their own
Yeah.
item or fit them under an item that where it makes sense to.
I fully agree with that.
All right. Thank you. Anything else on operating contingency? Yes, sir.
Not on that, but one thing I see on that old one that I really really like is the alternating grayscale. You get to them with the line here and then why you know which.
Oh, that's what the other piece papers for. Yes, I see what you're saying. On that.
Um, just to form anything, this makes it much easier than. I like the gray scale on twenty twenty-five.
It has a easy on the eye shallow, but for some reason the printer doesn't like when I tell it with different colors, so.
That kind of upstairs? Or at least on that is almost done, so maybe we can get one that works.
Is this from a quick look?
No, no, it's a direct dump out of Cassell into Excel.
Oh.
And then I.
Automatically do the the gray scale for you.
Yeah, I just didn't have time for that.
Yeah. Nope, we are all shot across the bow for budget. That is what we're doing. Um, let's move on to projected revenue for twenty twenty-five, something I think we're all very interested in.
Yes, so Rebecca, I sent you email of some handouts that, um, that I have for the meeting. So just so if you wanted to follow along, like five minutes ago.
Okay, could you send it to my personal email? Because I don't have my city computer with me.
Oh, absolutely.
Which means you get to share your personal email. So delightful. Happy to. Uh, it's Bibliobec, B I B L I O B E C. You got it? Okay, I'm ready, go. Okay, B I B L I O B E C.
At gmail dot com.
No, good one.
It makes me smile every time I use it. Thanks, Crystal. I'll look for it.
Yes, hopefully I spelt it all correctly. So let me know if you do not see it come through.
Okay.
Property tax, just a five percent increase.
Hmm.
The twenty twenty-five projected, uh, one five percent increase.
Property tax, no, it's not.
Okay. There is.
Five percent increase starts.
Oh, yeah, twenty-six.
Next year.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, none of the the items on the the webinar that I jumped in on look like most everything was impacts for twenty-six, starting in twenty-six. Yeah. Um. So the the property tax, I don't know how y'all have done this before, or that's why I don't have a giant spreadsheet with everything. I figure if we nail down revenues and we know how much money we have, then we know how much we can spend. Departments are still working on getting their, um, budgets to me so I can create like a master working budget that we can then adjust from now. Um, so property tax, I based it on, um, the values for for twenty three that we got in twenty-four. The number shouldn't change that much. Um, I did reach out to the treasurer, the assessor, um, and Mark said that he didn't know that like last Thursday. We have not received it. Um, he did send me a snip of the county's valuation. Um, so I could back into that mill levy number and then I multiplied it by the mills. So I think we'll cover right around the one point.
So it's really based off that mill and the assessor's information.
Yeah, yeah. If you if you take the, um, if anybody's interested, if you've ever looked at one of the valuations that comes from the assessor's office. Um, if you take the, uh, the total and divide it by a thousand, that gives you the dollar per mail and then multiply it by your nails. That's how you get to your your mill levy number. Oh. Everything else, I just kind of went off of, um, historical, I had added columns in there for a three year average as well as like twenty-four estimates. Um, so I kind of was basing off of that. I I really don't know, or I don't believe that we'll hit that three point nine million, um, sales tax revenue for twenty-four. Um, the, as I was explaining to the mayor earlier, the sales tax budget is formula driven. And looking at the amount, the number that that was derived from the twenty-four budget, that three point nine, um, it includes three years' history. So we had that May twenty-two payment of almost five hundred thousand, which was an anomaly. It really shot it up. Um, so I think, you know, whoever was preparing the budget probably should have taken a harder look at that. Um, so I think we might come closer to three point seven by year end. I just kind of left that at three point seven for twenty-five. Um, and we'll just watch the next couple of months and see if we need to tweak that number a little bit. Um, but that's how I came up with that number. I I really think we need to, like, remove that, not completely, but it was five hundred thousand versus historically was like two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Yeah, for the month of May.
A good question about that. And I'm assuming it's only counting the income, the year to date, only the income that we've received to this point, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a little behind.
Correct, yeah. Um, it is eight months of data, um, is what I have for the most part.
Makes me feel a little more comfortable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What is specific ownership tax?
Um, specific ownership tax. Um, that comes, I believe that comes from the county. Let me just take a look.
So is the idea to kind of review and ask questions for this, Dana?
Yeah, so and for us, for our revenue is principally sales tax, property tax, and then the other big contributor is severance tax, which is always sort of a we'll just see. Um, we'll just see what shakes out.
Yeah.
From that.
Um, so we do get specific ownership tax, going back to that, sorry to interrupt. Um, from the county. Um. So I would assume that those taxes are collected by, uh, probably the, um, the clerk and recorder. Um, um, those the specific ownership tax that we pay when we register our vehicles. And then anything that's within the city, I think, is is how that is calculated to us. So those those payments come to us directly from the county.
So that so the those main contributors are to our budget, you know, are those top three? Um, anything that's like historic preservation is probably is going to be a pass through. So they the numbers may look good, but they're going out the other end. Um, I I really appreciate and I, um, that the earnings on deposit number from our.
Yeah, I had a hundred thousand in there, but looking at, um, Colorado Trust today. Um, I went ahead and bumped that number up. Um, I believe in my last department report, I had mentioned that we had moved additional funds over. Um, so we're we're earning a little bit more, so I kind of just took the what we've earned for the month of September and just took it out for twelve months, kind of. And it it come in at like a hundred and fifty and I was like, but if we have to move some of that money back for equipment or whatever, then, you know, that I thought maybe a hundred twenty-five was a good number.
Um, my additional questions are on like the E V charge point, E V charging. That, do those, does that number take into account that revenue with the freeze increase in the
Oh, not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, I don't know. Um. I haven't seen the number, what the data will be to impact that, but we can, that's something we can look at in the next month.
Okay.
To try to, you know.
Because I know she already plugged those. I walked by the other night and I saw the higher charge was in fact, I was like, okay. Um, and then the other thing would be the Spruce Street reimbursements. Is that based on full occupancy or?
Um, it is, and I I really, I didn't touch that, so I just kind of, that's kind of what we've been, well, twenty-three budget was thirty thousand. I'm not sure why it was so high, but yeah. Um, so I just, I just left it at the twenty-four budget. I don't know if that's, you know, I know we're down year to date, um, with the flooding and the various things, so, um, I don't know if that's been wrapped up. And if we can expect, you know, tenants other than skin.
I think I would, I mean, I I guess I would recommend being a little more constrained on that because I I don't think it's reasonable to think that we'll have full occupancy. Throughout, we've definitely had people move in, stay a month, move out, like, that's really its purpose, right? As to be sort of a flop house for for transients who are trying to work out a more permanent thing. So I, I think I would dial that down. Um. By maybe whatever equip is the equivalent of a couple of residents, because it's got five.
Maybe in herself, seventy-five hundred.
I don't. Yeah.
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 The rooms vary, it looks like considerably from what I get from Centennial.
In terms of what they charge for?
Um, yeah, I I would guess by the bigger rooms, but maybe we'll.
So that fifteen thousand is like the rent, basically, that people would pay to be.
Correct, yeah.
So if three rooms are rented, that's only five thousand dollars per year per room. So that seems like a pretty reasonable amount to.
Do you think that already is sort of a a a dial down estimate?
Three rooms are rented and we charge eight hundred dollars a month per room?
I mean, we have yet to, we came close in twenty-two, it looks like. Um, we have yet to hit twenty-three actuals, fourteen.
Okay.
One, fourteen, seven, seventy. Um. So we have yet to head it.
Okay, that was last year.
Twenty-three, yes, correct.
To me, it seems going to lower that to.
Yeah. Year to date, we're at eleven thousand, one nineteen. Um, so.
Yeah.
You know, we might. I'm projecting like maybe around sixteen hundred, but again, right now.
Yeah.
That that's based on everything we've
Yeah.
we've earned year to date and we only have one tenant in there right now, so.
Okay, well, maybe that 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 maybe seems more reasonable than um, than at first flush.
So do you want me to bring it down a little slightly? Twelve?
Wouldn't make that much of a difference.
Not really.
Uh.
In the grand scheme of things, no.
Good on.
Not going to be nitpicky on that, I don't think. Okay. Well, that is.
Um, I had one question about the class two S T Rs. I noticed that we were down, are we just down on licenses in general or like turnover?
I need to try.
Yeah.
Crystal probably can speak. Well, I know you've actually done some research more with the reports that you've been pulling. Um, but I think a lot of it is that we are slightly down on licensing. Um, compared to.
So what I did also, like, we had budgeted. So I noticed when I was posting payments that we had class one, class two, they're also broken out in um, Gov O S and class one, class two. And I was like, oh, shouldn't be breaking these out. Um, so that's what I did. If you look at the twenty-four, um, year to date actual, those total amounts, here, I'll sum them over for you so you don't have to.
And remember, we made our budget for this last year and since then we've decreased the number of
Right.
licenses, so.
Yeah, so the the budget amount I have in there for um, for the class two license for twenty-five, that is based on a hundred and sixty-five licenses at three twenty-five.
Great.
Because that was the cap for the class two, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That that makes sense. I just was wondering, were we like below licensory or?
No, I don't think so year to date. Um. Let me scroll.
That's what my understanding was too, that we had like a waitlist, so I was wondering.
Um, and so that's the other big thing, like with the return from Deckard on the compliance information, and we'll see a lot of fill in there, I think, as well, too. Um, as far as possibly some mix match parcel things and, um, data. Um, and we're having to compare a lot of that for us as well. Um, so I think with the waitlist, with the fill-ins, we are.
I have a a question regarding, like, I know usually for grants and stuff that are passed through, we still have to list them as revenue. Even though they go out the other end. Do we have to do that for for accommodations tax also? Like, even though we don't really keep that, that goes out to different.
Yeah, and that's, and these are just the general fund.
Okay.
Revenues.
So that's its own little.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Where's that?
Yeah. Okay. Well, great. Other questions or comments? Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so the the we we signed up at some point for someone to review the rental platform for S T Rs. Um. Yeah. As as a comparable thing, people that run businesses out of their homes, if they're employing somebody, that's one thing. But if they're running a business like consulting or something like that, I, do we get licenses for those? Or are they are they transparent or should that be added to that, um, search of your platforms, uh, contract?
Good question. Our code does require, even if you are in a face service, contractors or something like that, that you do need a business license to operate within the one building. So those business licenses of that nature should be enacted into the year to dates as well and the total overall.
However, the compliance software is specifically geared towards S two F S, yeah.
So we got the experiment.
It's not something that that I'm aware that Deckard offers.
Not that I'm aware of either.
Yeah, it's a good question.
No, good questions.
Uh, where are the accommodations texts on here?
These are just, this is just a general fund.
It was like, do we have to have it on here?
Oh, I thought you meant like it was on here. I was like, I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Unless we do.
Um, that's in fund seven, I believe.
Um, yeah, I know it's a lot faster.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wondered, because we had some pass-throughs on here and watching a lot.
Right, and and a lot of those are budgeted. You'll notice like on the backside that like the grants are budgeted because we just, we just always, we just don't typically know, like, things could come in here. Yeah. So overall, like, right now, um, our budget, our revenues for the general fund, um, are coming in a little lower. A hundred thousand lower than the prior year. So I'll I'll just keep keep an eye on how things are progressing with sales tax. And, um, as we dial in the numbers for property tax, when I get the valuation, of course, it's only going to be the preliminary va- valuation. I'll get the final button valuation. Um, I think it's due by, I usually, no, yeah, December third or November twenty-eight.
I'll just like to change it again.
Yeah. And let's hope not, yeah.
Then a year.
Okay, yeah, and if you have any other questions, let me know.
Okay. All right. Other questions on revenue?
Um, Crystal, from your perspective, was there anything in here that you were like specifically wanted to discuss or saw complexity in that? I don't know.
I don't think so. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty cut and draw. Um. You know, I didn't notice anything that was super odd. Um, the the highway user tax, we've gotten that information from the state already. That number is what it'll be. Um. Severance, um, I haven't had a chance to dive into it. Um. Like how it's calculated, but we all got the C M L, I think. Um. Catalog, not catalog, whatever it is, magazine. Uh, and there is, it's open on my desk. I just haven't had a chance. It's been open for a week. But there is a section in there on severance tax. Um, and, you know, how it will impact twenty-four or twenty-five and twenty-six, but I haven't even had a chance to look at that article to see if we need to even adjust that.
I mean, for us, because it has a couple different sources. And some of it, and I don't really know enough about like what this area generates in terms of mineral. You know, income that would feed in to the sources that put out severance tax to the communities. So I wouldn't even know.
I mean, some of the, like, in the first paragraph or so, it was like, obviously, we lived in them and, you know, those those minerals.
That's more catch central for us, isn't it?
Around here.
Hmm.
I thought those would be a little bit more county centric, wouldn't they be?
I think from what I understand, again, I haven't read the whole article. I like looked at pieces, but um, and I I might be misspoke speaking, so if you have the catalog, I would like maybe not read it as well. Um, but from from what it looked like, it's like they gather all of the severance taxes and then based on, you know, location or county. Um, where there is, um, uh, historic districts and the, you know, the the mining one and the those.
Oh.
Is like a piece is like divvy.
I see.
It's kind of like.
So it's more.
I skimmed, I like, I skimmed it like. Years ago, I drew a little map of like where severance tax comes from, and I don't know if this, I haven't read this yet, but I don't know if this addresses that.
Decided to see it in there. I would, I need to.
But it isn't a, you know, like, oh, we produced X amount of.
Yeah.
Worth lived in them, so we get X amount from that. Like, it's it's a lot harder to.
Yes, okay, that makes more sense because I'm imagining it's a little more straightforward for the county, but for us, it's just more complicated.
Right, but it's, um, I think those renewable renewable energies and resources, you know, continue to dwindle with, um, you know, mining and and. Continue to dwindle with, um, you know, mining and and whatnot. Like, the number is just gonna continue to go down overall for the state. Yes, that's, yes, it's opened on my desk, just like that, has been for a week, probably got coffee stains on it. Yes.
This is maybe. Is there a way in this, like, I find it really helpful to look back a. A few years with the budget versus actuals instead of just. The actuals, is it too much to add?
It's not. Out of castle.
We have twenty-three budget and actual.
I know.
You wanna see?
I mean, I feel like if if. There's an actual on there, I'd like to see the budget with it, even if it means that we. Lose twenty-one.
Or you could look at the budget twenty, I have my budget saved as a link.
Oh, yeah, I have, I have budgets going back to two thousand and eighteen.
So I have, like, I have the actuals, like, because I'm always in this one, but.
You can make your separate tab and.
Because the more columns we add.
This is already making my eyes.
I know, it's very small, it's very small.
I know, it feels like.
That's for notes.
You never know when you need notes. We use that before.
Can we stop beating revenue?
Sorry.
Let's move on to municipal courts. Thank you for coming, Ms. Wood.
And I did, um, I did print, um, the judge's budget as well for you all. Also microscopic, like there are notes on it. Here, podium, feel comfortable, sit, relax.
Plus, I think this gives you, this will make you audible on the hour.
Okay, even better. All right, um. So I presume everybody had a chance to look at my very brief budget. Um, as is usually the case with with our courts since we. Aren't uh. Uh, we only do one thing, so. Um, I'm happy to answer questions, but there were a couple of points I wanted to to just make. Number turn i- in regards to the information that um I presented. Um, in response to Councilmember Garbs' uh question at our first work session about the goals and stuff about the number of Spanish. Uh, speaking folks that um came before the court. Went back and looked through the files and noted that we only had two summons where it was actually indicated that there were Spanish-speaking folks. But we had multiple instances where there were folks who showed up who only spoke Spanish. Um, and uh, of the two where they would noted that they spoke Spanish, both of those individuals. Had to appear more than once, and in one instance, several times, um. Uh, so that was um one of the concerns. We also had a situation where. There was a minor who had to appear with their parent, and while the minor spoke English, the parent did not. And so that's another situation we sometimes run into where we need the language interpretation services. The one thing I was concerned about, and I apologize for not following up with a question on that, was I noticed there aren't any expenses listed for this year yet. For interpreter um services, and I know that we've used Miss DeLeo several times, and I don't know if she just hasn't invoiced us for those services. Or what our situation is with that, and I don't know if you've received or if it could have gone somewhere else, I just haven't seen any invoices for her services. Um, DeLeo and its radical solutions or something like that, is her company? It, I was gonna say, yeah, there's nothing in here for expenses, so I know that we incurred interpreter services for this year, but I haven't seen any invoices for that. Um, I also, one of the things I didn't put in there because it wasn't in the budget last time, and I understood my direction to make sure that my budget stayed flat. But there's nothing in terms of court security, and I wasn't, I I didn't know if by chance there's anything in the police department's budget. Addressing court security where they would be providing those services or anything like that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Obviously, we have enough on over the police departments, but it needs to be somewhere.
Yeah, and that's what I didn't know if it needed to be in mine, and if so, I would need to get feedback from them as to a projected cost to provide those services. So that's the one kind of gap, and I apologize for not catching that, that when I was here, the work session before, we did talk about security in the goals meeting. But then I noticed there's nothing in my budget for that. The other thing that I wanted to um ask about is I had made a note in my budget about the prosecutor services. Because that's one thing that has really ramped up over the last year in terms of those costs, but it's not anything that I can control out of my budget. In fact, the prosecutor in work for the municipal court, it works for the city administrator, same as like the city attorney would. And so I didn't know if it made more sense to perhaps have those expenses in that category of other professional services. Um, in the administrator's budget or or what.
I mean, that's a really good question. I I know that, um. You know, especially if we want to see greater enforcement. Which would in bring greater. Cases to the municipal court, then we will have greater bills.
Exactly.
The prosecuting attorney, the same way, like, if we want greater enforcement, we're gonna see greater costs for towing. Like, it's just.
And that's, I I mean, it in the past, these my understanding has been that the prosecutors, the firms that were engaged for that had flat fees. And I believe that in this instance, it's an hourly rate that they're billing, and that might be something. Now, I guess Laurie's not here, um, that might want to explore as to whether the firm would be willing to do a flat fee. Because uh one of the concerns too is that, as you're saying, as our caseload expands. There's gonna be a need for more services for the prosecutor, and it might be a really big moving target. Um, for y'all in your budget, if it's not something that's kind of honed in on with that. Um, the other concern I have is the potential that. Uh, we might end up needing to do a second docket or rearrange our docket schedule if um the cases do increase. Because right now, our prosecutor, I don't know if it's every month, but routinely has a docket in the afternoon after hours. Um, down in Frisco, I think, or something like that. So and 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 I'll just be honest, that's, I'd rather us be in a situation where we didn't have to have those back-to-back dockets. Because I hate to say, I think it in some instances influences how he handles the cases, depending on how many we have. Because there's a bit of an incentive.
Arrive at at using this particular firm?
I don't know, that way, I think that was done through the city administrator's office. Um, and I wouldn't have been involved in that, because again, the prosecutor doesn't work for the municipal court.
That would seem a little bit weird.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how that approach was, I mean, I know some underlying reasons as to why. The decision was made to move away from a prior prosecutor. Um, i- in terms of potential conflicts and concerns with the way cases. At that time, by that firm, but um. I I I don't know, uh, I I think there was an R F P issued for the prosecutor services. Um, but I wasn't involved in reviewing those or anything like that.
Find out, that is some really good. So, security, where's that, where is that cost going to lift? And prosecuting attorney, like, because my question is, is this the right firm for us? Can we get a flat fee also? The back-to-back.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, I'm flexible, I don't want to impose on Miss Bushman in terms of the schedule for the docket, but I. I do have some flexibility in terms of if it would be better to have it, I mean, we could potentially start earlier in the day. Um, I hate to straddle lunch hour on folks, but we could potentially start earlier in the day if that provided more time. Uh, you know, one of the concerns, I think he'd come up from Denver. And one of the issues there is you've got travel time involved as well, so I wouldn't want the cities to incur travel, you know. Uh, twice, if you will, um, and I sure, I'm sure that's why for their efficiency, that firm's efficiency, they want to. Have the same, the dockets on the same day, because I do believe he prosecutes several different jurisdictions, not just ours in Frisco. So, no, that just might be worth a conversation to have in terms of. But I, we can have some flexibility with the time that you start, if we need to, if we need to move to a morning. Um, it would just need to usually start, you know, earlier than ten o'clock in the morning, I would think, in order to give him time to get up here. Other than that, I am more than happy to answer any questions. I, thanks for the top of the revenue report. I was, I was pleased to see we did bring in a little bit of uh change to contribute to the coffers this year. And I'm pleased that, you know, we're we're actually starting to collect more of the fines and stuff. Um, we still have a lot out there that aren't being collected and. And we really aren't in a position to do much in the way of collections enforcing those. If you decide to the point of, you know, in terms of tracking the fines, and if you decide that it's worth trying to engage. A collection agency do that, there are firms that work for the municipal courts in Colorado who. Collect the fines and add their fees to the fines, so the municipality doesn't actually pay for the collection cost. Um, but that's given our community, that's not something we've actively pursued, like, because, you know, it's kind of hard to get. Blood out of the tournant, if they don't have it, they don't have it, and and there is legislation, I know that'll be pending. Uh, in this next session, and there have been issues in the past where we're not allowed to collect on all the different fines that are issued. Because I think they don't want to end up having it to where, like, if somebody defaults on a plea agreement and part of it was the fine. Uh, part of that default, we're not able to go after them, for example, it gets contempt, and technically, you can sentence them to jail. So we would not be able to send them, you know, as an incentive to get them to pay or anything like that, and that's, that goes back to the whole notion of avoiding a debtor's. Type of thing, so I wouldn't want us to focus too much on the collections, but. If it's, you know, if it's something where you're not getting, and I mean, I think this issue is the most we've recovered in quite a while in terms of our fines. But it is a a point where the city really wants to look at every potential penny that can be brought in, we can. Look at how much is outstanding and what it might be worth to do some collection. And, yep, and just let me know what you want to do with that. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions, anybody else.
Making little notes about the collection agency. Questions regarding the municipal court? I know we had dispersed. Maybe getting, you know, a separate municipal court clerk, but that, if we did that, that person would be. Uh, under, under the included salary, right?
Well, and that's what, uh, and I don't know, in terms of my presumption is, Miss Bushman, for her ten hours that are allocated to the court. It's at her regular compensation right now, so it's just that that matter of that, which is an H B N. Allocated to municipal court, in the past, we found it incredibly difficult to hire somebody for a ten-hour. And that's why I think it was combined originally with the the city clerk. Um, but if there are other administrative staff, you know, I advocated in my. My initial goals and work session about trying to find additional administrative support for her. And so that she, when she is doing work for municipal court, she can perhaps focus on some higher-level things that we need to get done versus. Routine administrative, you know, copying stuff, email and stuff, that type of thing.
I know we were kind of laughing today about an idea that came up earlier about engaging a firm to tell us like. All about our staffing, and if we needed more staff, and we were like, we already know the question.
Yeah, we don't, in this, this town, we don't always need studies answers questions for us. Um, but yeah, no, I I just know i- in my observation, it's something that I think should have really benefited from having need some, it just. Administrative, basic administrative support. More routine tasks.
Well. Thank you first in line for getting a support.
I'm just trying to.
Okay, other questions for municipal?
When, when will the final be determinate thing, because I.
December third.
December third, I I didn't know if there was going to be another pu- a public hearing asked you the budget, or if it doesn't come up again, where we'll have a s- a third bite at the apple.
No, you know, I think as we get some to some of the bigger departments. And start comparing them to our our projected revenue. Then we start having some hard decisions to make, obviously, this year is going to be much more difficult than last year. Um, and and so we may be coming back to revisit some of this, like, your, your particular. Budget section, like you said, is really small, it's like, we just tend to be like, okay, you know, and. We don't come back to try to, you know, trim more off of what's already a really small.
Well, yeah, and if I haven't said it before, I think, I think I have, but um, for those I haven't, hasn't, haven't heard it yet. This municipal court's budget is in some instances less than one month of the budget for the larger. So, and we work very hard, we we are frivolous, we work very hard to constrain.
But I think the points that you brought up of like, you know, where does the prosecuting attorney cost to live? You know, is this the right? Group to to serve our our needs, you know, like. Those are really good questions, and I think, you know, that may end up changing. The mini court budget.
Yeah, the other thing is, you know, I, in anticipation of succession planning, as I've briefly mentioned in the past too. Well, if I, if I do decide to retire, you know, I don't say, what are you? At the end of this time appointment, you know, you will have to attract a new municipal judge. And I've been blessed to be in a situation where I don't need to make a certain amount off of this, this is more of my community service. And so I don't know that the person coming in behind me might be in that position, and so they, you you might need to at some point start looking after. Just that, I I, because um, I I want, I don't like to surprise anybody, and I want to make sure everybody's prepared, and, you know, I I love what I'm doing. I love this service, but I don't want to be, oh, hey, by the way. I think with the um, the associate judges that we we have appointed in East Wyland, I think would be readily available to help with this. As long as he doesn't end up getting promoted, which he seems to be doing a pretty good job as a county judge, so that's not unlikely. Um, so it would be starting over again, and and my other backup associate judges. I'm a semi-retired and spending a lot of time in Europe and other places right now, so he's not readily available. So, yeah, um, but anyway, just want to advance that for things that we're thinking about, the big picture for the municipal court going forward. That might be something to keep in mind.
Steve, I see your hand, but I just want to.
Concerning the costs. Um, so my understanding is, municipal courts in Colorado, you don't have to have a lawyer as the judge, right?
Uh, no, that's, well, that's not true, and in fact, the the city's municipal code does require that it be a licensed member of the state bar.
So you're saying that the Colorado law requires the. Courts to have a lawyer as a judge?
That is, that is my understanding, but I'm, regardless of that, the municipal court is a creature statute that's created by the city code. And the city code requires that the municipal judge be licensed member of the state.
Maybe, uh, I got that reversed, maybe I don't understand it correctly, but if that municipal code is wrong. I mean, in that it's. A super, it's a requires more than what states the statutes require, maybe that should be adjusted, I'll have to look at that.
And and I'll be honest with you, Mr. Prestash, even if it is adjusted and you decide that you don't need a lawyer. You're not gonna find anybody cheaper than me right now. Just not, a- and it's, I mean, what I'm paid is based on a projection of four hours, which is just the the docket day. That a- afternoon for the docket, which is not by far what is actually expended during.
The the thing is, um. Does a prosecutor, does that also have to be a lawyer? One practical reason you have to be a lawyer, someone that is wealthy could hire a really good lawyer that could batter a prosecutor. That wasn't sophisticated enough to do the job, but I think uh. May- maybe there could be some kind of. Flexibility in who would be the prosecutor on certain cases. So if this prosecutor expense is so um high, maybe you could. See if the prosecutor doesn't, has to be a lawyer.
No, they do, I'm sorry, that's absolutely, that is statutory, that any, anyone prosecuting crimes has to be a licensed member of the state party. So.
Okay, and just to eh follow up on your question, on on the schedule currently, on November twenty-sixth, there is a. Final conclusion section, so if anyone does want to revisit certain things, that is what we currently have listed on our agenda. To kind of bring back some things before, if anyone does want to have that conversation.
Yeah, just let me know, if there's, if in, yeah, of course, if you come up with other questions, or, you know. Need me to meet with Laurie or whatever to talk through some of these open questions, just let me know, I'm happy to do it. Thanks for the time, appreciate it.
All right, let's move on to our imaginary human resources department. It's not imaginary.
Tonight's role will be shared by Crystal and myself. Together, we do have Paige's notes that she left her. Request, if she, if you will, or her last will, I can't say that, she's coming back.
Um, but so I basically just have kind of some general highlights. Crystal, I think maybe you can speak a little bit more to the actual budget that Paige. Was, has left, um, and then we can kind of go from there. Um, so basically we're gonna talk about some of her goals and their budget implications. Are you okay if I start or do you wanna talk the main points?
We didn't read the script.
So, um, the primary focus that Paige really wanted us to, um, work on is employee retention. Which I think has been pretty all of it to you guys. Um, where we're gonna need to adjust some salaries to meet some more market standards. That was the big focus. And so also talking about employee, enhancing employee wellness with updates to our wellness program. The employee assistance program, which is gonna require some modest funding increases. Um, the policy development, working with Lexipol and the implementation of our employee handbook. That as well, um, is basically gonna help us prevent some future compliance costs. Um, and additionally, she talked about some mandatory leadership training. Um, for management, that's gonna require some more upfront investments as well. And then I know another big thing that she and Ms. Hewlett were championing were some overall upgrades to the HR. And finance systems as far as just overall software and platform enhancement, which was, I think, one of the major. Um, budget increases that Paige was looking at. Crystal, do you wanna speak a little bit more to some of those highlights?
Um, sure. So Lori and I have met on the, uh, human resource budget. Um, not necessarily the budget numbers, but just a, a brief talking on, um, currently human resources resides under. City admin. Um, so we're gonna break that out. So it'll be its own department. Um, and so we have a better idea of what it costs, you know, to run our departments. Um, I noticed Paige had put some other, you know, telephone and whatnot in here. So I think, um. You know, as a whole, maybe some of the things we should think about is like, how in depth? Um, or how much do you want to see that your department's cost, like all costs we have, um. So a lot of items in the budget are dumped into that zero one forty six. It's just, it's city hall. The dumping ground. Um, I don't necessarily always agree with the things that are in there. Um, so, you know, I'd like. Your take two on like what you would like to see, like how inclusive of your departments include our folks. Um, so that's why this is kind of separate and not rolled into Lori's. We're gonna break that out. Um, so we'll be creating new GL accounts.
Who's GL?
Uh, Jeanette Ledger. Um, for those, so there are no counts here. That's, I have not created those at this time. Um.
Sorry, Crystal, does that mean that historically we don't have very specific numbers associated with HR? Because.
No, it's all been rolled under, uh, Lori's budget.
This was sort of like those.
Yes, yes, based on, you know, uh, Paige's budgeting skills with the county and looking, you know. Just understanding, you know, what it takes to operate. Or, or what line items would be within the department and taking a best guess at what it would cost to operate now. Salaries and some of those other things are, are easier to, um, come up with. Um, I do.
I was just gonna say, I mean, the rea- this is so ephemeral because before Paige, like. We either, there was talk about, should we contract HR services? And before that, it was just city staff. Not really.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot to it, even the, um, insurance questions and stuff that are coming up is. You know, we're in open enrollment, like that takes away from some of my other duties. Um, and that's just a small piece of it. Um, but then there's also the issue of compliance and, you know, somebody who can dedicate their time to make sure we're. In compliance with all regulatory, you know, policies and whatnot.
The benefit that, you know, we saw immediately with Paige is suddenly. We were getting positions filled and filled with really qualified applicants, like rapidly. Like we hired more people since we hired Paige, you know, than before. And that's not because we didn't have the need or the openings. It was just nobody had the bandwidth to kinda chase down each and every opening. And so. Well, that was fantastic.
Similar to you, Mayor. I feel like that's only a benefit and I'm glad to see it the way it is.
Yeah. Um, is in this, I know this is, this is really just sort of. Gauzy, um, but like, for instance, for Lexipol, would that go under professional services or?
For the, um. Um, I think currently it's probably in the dumping ground that is the city hall.
Like the six five oh one other.
Anything that's zero one forty six, like.
Every, that's all of city hall, zero one.
Yeah. I mean, there's specific line items in there or certain things, but, but yes, I feel like, you know, it, it's been. Um, used for all city hall expenditures.
I mean, to your grander point, I do think it's really important that we understand what the department's cost. And that does include those very specific things. So to me. The more that specific we can be, even if council doesn't necessarily get the choices to, where it's spent necessarily. But the more accurate we can be in reporting those types of expenditures, more, I mean, realistic it actually is to know. Like, oh, this department actually costs this much.
Like, I don't think we're gonna find us being like, well, you know, I mean, like Sepul is like too expensive, you know? That's the job of HR to be like, is this the appropriate? Thing that we're using, you know, just like Judge Floyd going, is this the appropriate?
But we can certainly say, hey, find a solution to us needing to cut down on certain amount of funds and that. And that's gonna be much more difficult to do if we don't have an accurate representation.
If they're lumped, it's harder to pick those.
I agree.
Also, I wanna hear more about Jazz HR.
Yeah, so we use it right now. Um, I, I only have.
I thought it was like dues and subscription, like it's like a magazine or something.
So right now that's for all of our job postings. Go and they, and then they go out to like Indeed and whatnot. But then when they apply, they come, they're funneled back into there and you can. Um, you know, I, I know very little about it other than I've been going in and I get notifications if we have a new applicant for HR.
So when, when the county got it and I was hiring camp staff through it, it was total game changer. Because it just manages the workflow of hiring. Very nicely. Like all the background checks, documents that staff need to upload, they can do it there. It's great.
It sounds great, but not nearly as fun as I was hoping.
Oh, I was going to mention that, um, and I don't know how. In depth, since this is my first go along with the city, I do have a salary spreadsheet I've been working on. That has all the departments and then, um, the, uh, um. Positions and then the base rate for twenty five. And then we've got COLA and like, I, it's giant. So, um, you know, I'll just keep working on that because I have to include all of those taxes and whatnot that the city is liable for. Um, as well as I ha- I had to add a column today for family, cause I'd forgotten about that. Right. But I don't know if those are presented. I didn't notice whether those are ever presented.
So previously in budget sessions, it wasn't consistent, but you know, we would always get. We would always get this version. And sometimes we would get an additional sheet with salary breakouts. I personally find that very helpful to just kinda understand, again, not that I'm gonna argue that, you know. This position deserves this much versus that, but, but more like what's the overall cost and where is that cost coming from for that department? How much does it cost to hire a police officer? You know, like how much does it cost to hire a department head?
Is that something, um, that would wanna be, you would wanna discuss in a budget meeting or something to be shared out with projections?
To me, what's been most helpful is if I know it when we are discussing that department. Uh, to have that information available and then having, if it's like also included as a separate thing. To just get a general glance at it, um, would be definitely helpful to have once we get into those general conversations. I don't know that I dedicate a whole like work session to just talk about like staff pay. But it is helpful to have that information to kinda see the breakdown and. Like, at least in my experience, it's been helpful to be able to see that when we go and through land as we have previously. I would like to see it.
Yeah. And I mean, really for us, the responsibility in the end is to make sure that we have a balanced budget and that our money. Our citizens' money is going to things that benefit them.
Right. And that's, like, it, that information helps support kinda make those decisions of, you know. Not that we have in my experience, it's usually been growth, but. Any hard decision imagining that would make it much easier to look at and be like, all right, well. We're not gonna decide where it goes or who's getting the cut where, but it makes.
Right, to see the overall, I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
So just so I'm clear, the plan is to replace Paige, but. Move the department out of the city administrator.
Yes, just to break those expenditures out. So it's a standalone.
Like they, would the HR director still report to the city?
Yes, yeah, as a department head, as that.
Doing that with Paige is shit. They would have department head meeting with Paige, same way that she does with every other.
I just think that the HR position within the city is still relatively new. So it was just kind of rolled up rather than. You know, a standalone like planning or finance or.
Does, does anyone have a sense of this salary is? Um, salary that will get a good HR person?
I don't, she had done some compensation research for her.
Well, we have the point study.
Right. We have the salary. And I know that, so Lori made some kind of mid-year corrections for. Using that data where. Trying to get people just kinda closer to the median, cause traditionally we are like down here. And I can't remember if Paige was one of those that she corrected. Or not, but we do, yeah, I mean, we have, excuse me, we have that information. About what the, what the median would be, understanding that that information comes from our surrounding. Counties and we are by no means really comparable to them. So we can look at those numbers and then sort of be like, yes, but what about here?
And I think that was based on. Her. Her rate, wage when she left, plus the two percent COLA. Um, I don't recall what the. Rate was that, that the position was posted at. I don't. I could get on Jazz HR. But just if I'm looking at the sal- salary spreadsheet that I've, I've been putting together, like. We're at five point, almost five point five million dollars in wages plus fringe. Yeah. It includes fire and obviously the, I know Cisco's going to the revenues. So fire, fire, all of fire does not come out of there. We have to remember that seventy percent of those is funded. Percent of the animal shelter, yes.
Yeah, I guess we'll see. We'll see where that is.
But yes, to give you an idea of what, you know, that's obviously, uh, personnel is always the biggest impact of that.
I don't know, but data seems to suggest I shouldn't go the way that it seems to be.
Yep. Yeah, okay. Other questions about HR? Other than. Yes, sir.
Okay, so a historical perspective, you, you talked about, uh, Sarah Dallas had, uh. Run quite a bit of administrative stuff here. Before Sarah Dallas was here, that office was occupied by, um. Eva Vensky, and she did everything. She was the treasurer, she was a city clerk and everything else she did. So you only had one person. That ran the whole administration.
Revenues have grown. Tremendously since Eva was here.
Was a very important issue. Cause she was behind on keeping the. But I, I had, uh. Uh, researched some more than this in one time. She had them all there, but they weren't collated. I mean, they were just, you had to go through year by year.
Just keep trying to level up, Steve, and it just, that's costs money to level up as far as I can feel right now.
But when you notice something that one person almost ran the whole city.
Must've been exhausted. Yeah, that's all I can say.
The city as it exists right now could not be run by a single person.
Yeah, that'd be crazy.
I'm not sure. I sued the city the first time in nineteen eighty four and it was a little bit heavy. Basically, she was a city administrator.
To this day, I think. Okay, I wanted to throw in executive expenditures at the end, not because I have any groundbreaking, like, I don't know if you've ever looked at the executive expenditures. Part, I'll pull out. The old budget from, from this, but. It's even smaller than Judge Floyd's. Um, so there's like the whole kinda salary and, and, um. The other quiet costs behind that with, with FICA. The thing that I really wanted to talk about was a couple of things. One is, and this is just coming down the pike, but tucked under the executive expenditures is something called the discretionary employee bonus. And in past years, that has either been something that the mayor would just. Award, but in other years, it's also kind of been a shared decision with council of, of. Employee bonuses to, you know, specific things. I personally. I don't know how I feel about any of that, but I just wanted you to know that that's there. It still lives there. Um, and we will have to deal with that, but I haven't done anything with it so far. It's a yearly. Well, I don't think it was a single thing, like it, it can be like split up, um. I need to talk to Greg more about.
Award that was awarded at the.
There's employee of the year. Or lately employees.
But I think, I think it was bonuses.
I think this year is twenty thousand, I think. This is twenty twenty two.
I mean, that just seems crazy in concept, cause like, I don't work here. I don't know.
The other thing I could do is, you know, was I, I feel like I have a, a better. Awareness of some of the different employee contributions, but mine is heavily skewed to city hall, right? Anything else, so I.
Everybody got one last year, but it was like based on years of service and if you were full time or part time.
And so I, I'll talk to Lori about it, cause maybe it would be something that she and I could come up with a. Strategy and talk to you guys about it and make sure that you're like cool with it, cause.
Yeah, I'm not cool with the way it works now, if it means that we have to choose, cause like, I see department heads. For like three, four hours max a week.
What I don't know is this employee who came in over and over and over, went the extra mile. Okay, I'll talk to Lori, um, and we'll try to come up with a strategy and I'll bring that back to you.
Seems like, um I mean, in a way, I've seen this work. I it's kind of a no brainer, like department heads nominate their staff. A little bit of a filtration system.
We are a department.
You can nominate yourself.
Single person departments.
Um. Man, we have a lot of those for it, huh?
The other thing on there is is this uh again, sort of trash dump of supplies, so that is usually um around.
Did this year?
It's thirteen hundred. Thirteen hundred this year, so traditionally, so originally Greg would use that for newsletters, quarterly newsletters. Which we don't do anymore. Now we have our city newsletter. I've you may or may not know this, but one of my jobs is to order flags for city hall and the table opera house and the fire department, but that's kinda where the flag cost. I also this year, and one thing that I've been talking to Crystal about is is the state of the community is something that the the city does, like that is our baby. Traditionally, the Lake County Community Fund is the one who organizes it, so they do, they arrange for the catering. They arrange for the flyers, they arrange for the interpreter, like they do all that legwork and the city pays for it and then we show up and talk and give presentations and decide who, you know, what what's the topic gonna be that year, blah blah blah, but all those bills come to the city. And so this year, being rather surprised with that it they're, in the past, those separate costs, you know, so freight is like six fifty. Catering is close to two grand. Interpretation, hundred and seventy five, you know, flyers.
That's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
It's great.
You got a good deal.
Gloria is fantastic. Um flyers, again, like I think there were one twenty five or something like that, but I was getting these bills and like, I don't know where to put these. So some of them went into supplies, so right now supplies is way over budget because of that. Some of them went into a variety of city hall. Contingency, you know, like, but I, so I, so I also wanted to come up with a place where state of the community could live because that's a fairly good chunk of change. It's gonna, it shook out to, you know, almost four grand, so that I would like to be able to to see those costs and track those costs and actually know where to bill those costs to. And I don't know if that needs to, we had talked about, should that live under the executive expenditures as a separate line item, should it live under what?
To me, it sounds like a bad expenditure and that could totally like translate to more stuff, like if we were to do town halls or like.
That's a good point, because one of the other things, little known things is that when Lake County Community Fund does their community dinners, the city has typically paid for the porta potties.
Right.
You know? Where did that money come out? You know, who knows? I love the idea of an event fund, because we may need to do town halls, we may, like we did for the police chief and stuff like that. What would you think about that?
I think that would be fine, and I think it would be you know, maybe, maybe that would be better suited under city hall. But as if we have it as like events, so that we can keep all of those places or all of those things in one place.
I mean, that makes the most sense.
Yeah.
Cause like.
I like it.
I I totally see a future where we have to have more town halls, say if we were going to prep ourselves to pass a bill. Like sales tax or something, we would probably want to put a little bit more effort into that and put that in the budget to make sure, hey, we have intentions to do this this next year. So let's make sure that we have it budgeted in the events so that we have the fu- funds and we know where it's going. So that's, that to me makes total sense to have as a separate line item.
But I mean, shouldn't it be two separate line items? This function you talked about, that's a standard thing. That should have its own line item. And the other events should be.
I don't, I don't know that we necessarily need. I mean, as long as we can within as long as we can look in within events and I can go back and be like, alright, I know where these bills went, so I know how much catering cost from year to year to year. Um, cause really the others are amount to weird things like porta potties or event space. You know, I don't, I didn't cater our strategic planning town hall on purpose, which may have been a mistake, but that's, that's expensive.
I think it was a mistake. I think the open bar is enough. And uh one of the takeaways from that, wasn't it that we were gonna try to have more of those? Just.
That people seem to appreciate that connection. And I think especially when we get some space that we can just use the city's own space.
Well.
We try to keep.
Rotten produce available for the crowd.
Um, okay. Well, thank you. I think if we were going to do that, what I would, what I would do roughly is kind of throw in the cost of what state of the community was, what the police town hall was, at least for event space, the port- porta potties, which I would tell you was two hundred something dollars.
Did we end up paying for those issues?
The city didn't.
The city did or did not?
Didn't. Which was a thing, but uh and and just just to estimate like how much we should set aside in our in our budget for that.
Do you think something like the police town hall and like that search committee and stuff should be under H R?
H R maybe, well, I don't know, for events, like events suddenly get pretty tricky.
Feel like it makes sense under events, cause we're probably not gonna do another place, eight, but we might do another very similar thing.
Like the strategic planning town hall, the sales tax.
We might not repeat those, but we might decide, hey, people wanted a town hall that bad, let's just use this funds. And we have four scheduled, so or four budgeted. Makes sense to me.
No, I like that. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think those are my big questions or my big things I wanna talk about. Cause executive is just like, and then there's like a small amount under education conferences or travel. Um, which just never really get used. So there it is.
Because you travel when you're not here.
I.
Are you gonna pass that around?
This, well, this is like from twenty twenty two.
Oh, yeah, we don't.
That's why I was looking over here, cause I don't have the current numbers. I was just looking for the the outline item. Hey, that's all I got.
Do you, will you use travel and education? I mean, is there an opportunity for you?
Uh, there is, I just have been.
It was a C M L annual plus room and board, probably cost about.
But like the mayor's leadership academy was, would have blown that budget right out, so I've just been and and mayor lobby never charged anything to travel, like it's just sort of like a habit. What I would like to do is use some of that money, because I think C M L next year is in BRAC. Which is really, and I found that conference incredibly useful, and there were entire councils like like Ure brought their whole, their whole council there, you know, so it, I found them very I found them very useful. You know, both they do both, both for the the talks, but more importantly was for for the connection with other people in your same job, like I sort of blew Lori off when she was like, no, I have all these lists of other city administrators and I just call them already. You know, like I have this short list of mayors and I'm just like, hey, what are you guys doing? You know, like it is so essential. And it's great, I think, for council members too, you know, like I went out for coffee with one of the Canyon City Council members, cause I met her at C M L and it's really great. You just hear what other what other, what other cities are dealing with and how they're dealing with it and you suddenly realize, you can ask these questions, like, do you guys have this problem too? And it is so proud, I mean, it's just, it's so rich. Like, I come back and think like So what I'd like to use that for this coming year is with with that fund, like we could probably fit three different council members admissions to the C M Ls, it's like one hundred forty bucks.
And there's a, there's a district level C M L meeting that's for all of us neighboring counties, so we can talk more specifically with our neighboring counties.
It is a little bit weird, cause in C M L, our district is like, just like our, in our council of governments, we're on the northern edge of that. So the C M L district conference we should be going to is like in Florence. But we end up going to the C M L district in Brac, cause it's close, or you know, next time it's Keystone, it's just closer. And that's okay, you can cross boundaries that way, people don't care.
Are those the cog meetings or?
No, those are C M L districts.
Fully just, okay. So the cog would have its own, I mean, I know the cogs have their own meetings completely and they operate themselves, but do they?
Has its own, like its own board.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm on that.
But but do they, I guess, do they have similar style events is more similar question of like more direct, hey, let's all meet up.
No, the the cog is much more like you make decisions and they try, like they have these services that they are trying to that they find that they can distribute more effectively across a broader region than just like focusing on a particular city. So for instance, our senior center is highly supported by the COGS regional area agency on aging and um and and so that, those meetings are much more like decision makings. The C M L is much more like here's some information or what we did at the district meeting was just, everybody stood up and shared like what's going on in your neck of the woods type of thing. So we got to talk about, we just hired a police chief, you know, and somebody else says, we're doing a housing development and you know, it's just much more, just seeing what other people are doing.
I guess the reason I asked is cause I was approached by someone who was running the cog um meetings, they got grant funding, I don't know which one of the two.
Was it the Keystone thing?
Probably, I'm not sure, I forget. Um yes, I think it was while I was in vacation, you let me know about it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um it makes, it would make sense to me that they would also do something just based off that funding that they got, I was just. Kind of, it's more intentional, it's it's decision making, like leadership on the regional level, like just like the cog normally is anyways, but I just wasn't sure if they had more intentions to be more deliberate about like also including more people from certain communities or.
That, I mean, that was its own, is its own separate weird kind of probably one time thing because they had funding from a funding from Department of Energy, weirdly. There's a long story behind that, but so that's like a separate project that came through the cog that wasn't cog generated.
Yeah, I'm only familiar with cog with that project and the direct services that we use with.
So the cog provides like all of our R I C.
Right.
Is through the cog. A lot of our senior services are through the cog.
In the head doctor administrator.
Yeah. And they're hope, you know, they have not been super active up in this part, but they are, they're trying to make.
Well, they're definitely more active than they used to be.
Yeah. It's an act that's incredible. So anyway, that's all I got on executive. That that number shouldn't change a whole lot, especially if I can get this, the state of the community costs out of the executive supply thing and just leave it for flags.
No.
Yeah. Flags cost a lot, the table opera house flag, it's huge.
It is a big one.
Yeah.
Is it bigger than community field spot?
Oh, that's, I don't order that one, so I'm not sure. It's a ten by fifteen. I don't think it's as big.
No, that one's huge.
Sounds like a ten by twenty or something.
Yeah, it's always.
Yeah, that's ten by fifteen, that's five by eight, fire station two is three by five. I just never really anticipated nine. Okay, that's, that's all we got tonight, people. Thank you so much. It's gonna get it's gonna get more intense from here on out. We just thought this would be a light little intro.
This is a great first meeting.